You, the little one.
Let's bring this meeting to order. Tonight is the committee of the whole meeting for November 13th. Please rise. The pledge allegiance will be led tonight by Mrs. Lamott's class from AEC.
We're gonna do it. Do your thing. Do your thing. We're gonna do it. Yeah, we like to take pictures with the children. We're about the children, so we like to take pictures.
Just to show that we have kids here?
No, I'm telling you. Oh, I have to get in this one? Are we too close? Can you see us all?
I was just gonna say that.
Okay, Mr. Potts, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bytes. Mrs. Bytes. Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Martino?
Here.
Mr. Ochus O'Neal? Mr. Ochus O'Neal? Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Raskin?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Fardeski?
Here.
And Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Okay, the procedures for public participation are printed inside the cover of your agenda. If you haven't already done so, please sign in at the back of the room. If you would like to address the board at the appropriate time, please approach the microphone or the podium, sign in there as well, state your name and address for the record, and you'll be afforded three minutes to make your presentation. Under announcements, does any board members have any agenda edits?
I have one, Mr. Wolf. Several meetings ago, we had a four-four tie after pushing out for the baseball championship. Have you been able to resolve that in my opinion?
No.
Have we voted?
Yes.
That's my agenda.
It's, we're not voting on it this month. It's as much, yeah, we'll wait till the new board's seated and let them decide. I do have one agenda edit. We're going to remove 6A from the superintendent's report. Mr. Kriner was got stuck at the high school, wasn't able to attend tonight, so his mother, not wanting to accept the award on his behalf, asked if we could reschedule it for next Monday, so that's what we'll do. I'll move on to 6, superintendent's report. Okay, Ms. Lamott, please come forward for your presentation.
So, I know not many people, that unless you are involved in the GIFT program, don't really know what we are up to on a daily basis, and since our children were here...
Push the button.
What, push the button?
The light comes on. Oh, they're good. You can pick it up and talk.
I can, thank you.
Do whatever you like, almost.
So, since we were all here, I wanted to take a chance to actually talk about what we do on a daily basis. And one of the big things that we do is the garden. Our school garden was started a long time ago and sort of fell to the hands of the GIFT program. And so, our job is to harvest the vegetables, plant the vegetables, weed the garden, do the compost. And the kids really get a lot out of that. While we are there, we end up talking about different kinds of seeds, different kinds of weeds, different kinds of plants. They all know how to compost a garden now, and in fact, I had a parent email me asking for weeding homework. So, here they are, hard at work. Obviously, this is a little bit old, because we started in September. But they were pulling in the harvesting. We had pumpkin plants. We were able to share pumpkins with the staff. Any of the harvests, we can't use in the cafeteria, but we do give to the kids, and then what the kids don't want, they end up, the staff does take, so it's going to good use. So, our time in the garden, all of the different things that we do always leads to different lessons. The kids end up asking questions, why is this happening? We always have different discussions, and they go home and share that with their parents. One of the biggest exciting things was we were treated to a lesson on spiders. No joke, the spider was like that big. And it caught a couple lanternflies, and one of my classmates was actually able to watch it catch the fly, spin the web, and eat it. I know that that sounds kind of gross, but it was fascinating. In nature. So, what's next? Now that we're into fall and winter, we do need to get the compost back into the soil, and then it'll sit, and early spring will start to plant again. And the teachers actually end up asking, can we use this part of the garden for experiment? I already have a second grade teacher that wants to hang our sheet in the garden. We have it set up, and they're going to plant on one side, they can have some, and one side they can't, so it lends itself to some natural experiments. It's a really great place. We also have a fraction garden, so we will plant that with different fractions, and it gives the teachers another visual to use with their math lessons. So, outside the garden, we actually do a lot of stuff. And we started the year with writing, and the kids wrote a lot of really great poems, based on Georgia Eliot's poem, "Where Are We From?" And we did a really big discussion on, well, where are you from? And "Burnsboro," and "I'm from Douglasville." No. And we read the poem, and what was the point of the poem, guys? Summer. Right, you're not from a place, but you're from the memories and the things that you do, and your experiences that you have, and they were all wonderful poems. Our fifth graders are working on a stock market game, and they have actually invested $100,000 hypothetically, online, and they are going through, and we've got a boy team, a girl team, and by the middle of December, we actually try and find who will be able to make the most money. So, they learned about dividends, and they learned about how to create a portfolio and be diverse, and they're really having a lot of fun by analyzing the stock market. The fourth grade has been working on money. We have done a banking unit, they created a budget, they learned banking and checking, they learned how to keep a check register, they had to go shopping, and within a budget, they created grocery lists, they even bought houses and cars, and we learned how to create fund interest, and they had to learn how to create interest from what their monthly payment was. Would anyone like to share what they took out of that unit? Fourth graders? All pretty much said the same thing. Sean? That was the biggest, I couldn't believe how much money went for just stuff you had to be for. The third grade just finished the measurement Olympics. We worked at measurement, and all of the different kinds of measurement, and how to convert measurement. And then actually, last week, they just competed in all of the challenge, draw, throw, and the cotton ball shot put, and they had to measure it and convert the different units, and we had a lot of fun with that unit. So, what's next? I got my baby fish eggs. We are doing trout in the classroom, so I have a huge aquarium, and we're talking about the stages of the trout. They came in as eggs, right now, everybody, what are they? What are they called? Oh, sat fry. So, they're still, they look like little tadpoles. And then about another month, we'll start swimming around, and we'll talk about the life cycle of trout, and then in May, the fifth grader will get the chance to go and release them in Denny Creek. Second trimester brings a big thing on engineering, so the fifth grade's building roller coasters. The fourth grader's going to be working on building a space station model. And the third graders are going to be working on creating a model, an invention. So, lots of engineering in our future. And a hope for the future is to maybe get field trips going back. We'll have to look at, but, I think, but the, could take in the kids to go do something in Philadelphia, possibly the Franklin Institute, with all of our wonderful engineering things. There's a couple exhibits I really like, so that's a little, maybe. And just thank you very much for everything that you do for us. Happy to end. Shall I turn this off?
Just blocking.
Just block it again? Okay. Thank you. Oh, they were awesome. No, yeah, right, no, but they did learn how to, they had to push it rather than... Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next up, we have Dr. Not Yet.
For you families, if you want to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, you're more than welcome to. If you would like to go and do something more fun with your evening, now would be the time to go.
Michelle, you have to stay. Scott, you have to stay. Okay, next up is Dr. C on the presentation on the SPP results. Not as exciting as...
I don't usually need a microphone, so, but I do. No, I think they need us. You're stuck with me here, and I'm not good, but I'm gonna have to be good. So, our purpose tonight, my purpose tonight, is for all of us together to take a look at our SPP scores, recognizing that while there are certainly other measures and indicators of things that are successes, we know that this is the public measure, and we know that this is the measure that goes in the paper and compares us to our neighbors and to our competitors at some level. We also know, based on the scores at hand, that this is not a moment for excuses. It's a moment to take a look at what's in front of us, and recognize the picture that it paints for us, and to kind of use it as either, it could be a watershed moment, or it could be a fork in the road moment, let you decide which of those you would like to know it, but in either case, where we go from here determines what that public perception of us as a district is. So, and I'm gonna have to... Scott, what did you do? I mean, it's beautiful. I don't see. That's why I'm making fun, right?
Keep talking.
Keep talking?
Yeah.
Keep talking. Awesome. Now I better move.
Yeah.
All right, I'll keep talking. The purpose of the SPP, it has four parts to it, and it has four purposes, and I intentionally put them in a different order from the way that they're often presented to us publicly. But the first purpose, and the third purpose, in my opinion, are connected purposes, and they are, the first thing that this SPP score does is it provides the public with a picture of the academic performance of every school, public school, in the Commonwealth, whether they are a district school, whether they're a cyber charter school, whether they're a charter school, whether they're a technical school, all of us get an SPP score. Thanks. And then that third purpose is that it provides parents and community with a performance measure that looks at the school where they reside, and it also looks at the schools that are all around them, and then everybody across the Commonwealth. So, it provides a pretty broad picture to our public about what's going on in our schools. From a school standpoint, it is a tool that we can use to inform our planning and our resource allocations, and our conversations around what we're doing with student achievement. And then that fourth piece is that it is part of the educator effective system. So, this SPP score does go into principal evaluations, it goes into teacher evaluations, it is tied to that system as well. At the district levels, I'm moving back to kind of that second piece there, we use this data to drive our goal setting and our planning. So, when you think back to what did teachers do on those two, who were in service days, one of the things that principals and staff did was they set goals, and some of the data that they used to set those goals and those achievement targets moving forward is data from this SPP score. So, for us, it does have a purpose. At the district level, at a core level, that resource allocation piece becomes really important, and we make, are we allocating resources to things that are really important and really ties to instruction and student achievement? So, what's in this SPP score? There are five factors, and I'm gonna stand here and not use that, because I'm gonna move right on. When you pull up the SPP score online, you get five tabs across the top. You have in your green folder only one of those tabs printed out, but you get five tabs. So, we'll talk about those five tabs, just so you know what they are, and then we'll talk really specifically about what's in the green folder. So, the first tab is the fast facts tab, and what's displayed up there is the district fast facts tab. I did note on the side that number of schools, average years of educational experience, which speaks to how long have our teachers been teaching, and geographic size of the district, are obviously district-only measures. When you pull that back to a school fast facts page, and each school does have one, you get the same sort of information, it's just really specific to the school that you're looking at. So, you will get school-specific, so on the left-hand side of that, you can see that it says it's the Daniel Boone School District, what's its website, what's the address, what's the phone number, those sorts of things. That information shows up for each of the individual schools too. So, you get what's their address, what's their contact information, those sorts of pieces, are they a Title I school? Some just sort of general things about the school. You also get enrollment specifics, specific to the school. So, on the district page, you get the demographics for the whole district. On each specific school's page, you get the demographics that are specific to that school, in the year that it was tested. So, they'll look different year over year for our schools as we continue to change structure. Also, you'll see that there are links on both of them, and there are links to related agencies. So, all of us have a link to the intermediate union, the high school also has a link to BCTC, and all of us have a link to what's called supplemental reports. So, things like our state schools reports are there. Also, they're hot link, when you're on the website, you can click right on it, and it takes you right to that report. The next tab isn't super interesting. It is simply the scoring tab, and it's a lot of words that say what's going on on the next page. So, I'm gonna, we'll get into that, because I think it's important to understand what's on the academic page, but I think it makes more sense when you're kind of looking at those next to each other. So, that is there for the public to know what goes into that. Okay? We're gonna come back to this, but this academic performance tab is really the meat of this SPP score. Each school's performance tab, I did print out for you, and it's all in your little green folder, because I think sometimes it's easier to see it when it's sitting in front of you, and that's really small. So, each of the school's performance tab is there. I'm gonna go through each of these pieces, because I think when you look at it, it's easier to understand that way. And knowing what's there is really important, understanding what this SPP is. The piece that is kind of over in the little bottom side, it also gives you another link to all the federal accountability information. So, that's not there specifically, but if you're interested in that link, you can click on it, and it brings you to another page, which spins out a lot of the same information specific to Daniel Boone and the federal data that we sent off. And the most recent computer that there is data for is 2015 and 16. But you'll see the same pieces of data when you pull up that federal accountability. You'll see PSSAs scores, you'll see language arts, math, reading, you'll see attendance, all of those pieces that are also in this SPP score. So, there are two other tabs that are not super interesting if they're not live, but there's a comparison tab, and what that allows you to do when you're in the system is take a look at your district and compare it to anybody else you want to compare it to. So, you can compare it to neighborhood schools, you can compare it to cyber charter schools, you can compare it to whoever you want in the Commonwealth, and it'll tell you how you did compared to them. You can compare within a district, and like I said, across the Commonwealth. And then the last piece is really a cumbersome piece to like put on a screenshot, but this is basically everything that when a principal goes to do some school planning, this supports tab is linked to all different places and spaces that can be helpful in planning those school action planning kinds of pieces. So, there's a link to the CDT website, there's a link to, there's a link to a bazillion things. So, you can link there to all kinds of different resources. Okay? So, how do you get the score you get? So, it's like a test, right? There's 100 points. And those 100 points calculate out to the score in the top left-hand corner of the papers that you have in front of you. So, that 60-some percent is out of 100, or the 60 points is out of that 100 points. 50% of that score is gonna come from indicators of academic achievement, which we'll talk about, and that closing the achievement gap. And you'll notice that that shows up twice, and we'll talk about why that shows up twice. 40% of it comes from the growth score. We'll talk about why growth is important as part of the school picture. And 10% comes from what they're calling other indicators, so things like attendance and graduation and promotion play into that. And then, because every good test has extra credit points, right? You can have seven extra credit points for your advanced achievement, and that is extra credit points whether your advanced achievement is on third grade, or whether your advanced achievement is the number of kids who score three or higher on an AP test. So, you can get bonus points for every piece of your population that has advanced achievement. So, let's take a look at them, because this is another one of those reasons why I gave it to you, because they don't all apply to everybody. So, it kind of becomes that piece, right, where not everything applies to everybody for lots of different reasons. So, being proficient or advanced on PSSAs and keystones, English, language arts, and math, or algebra, count for everybody. So, when you look at the five papers that are in front of you, you'll notice that everybody has a score for English, language arts, and math regardless. For science, you have a score this year for everybody except Monocacy, because Monocacy doesn't have fourth graders. When we have this conversation next year, you won't have a science score for Burnsboro either, because there aren't fourth graders that are taking the test. So, right now, the information that's in front of you, everybody has a science score except Monocacy. When we look at the percentage of students who are confident on an industry certification, these are our kids who are ACTC. So, this score obviously only applies to those schools which have kids at BCTC, so that's a high school, and that's actually a really positive score for us. When you look at, look the right side of triangles, that's actually a really positive score for us. Your percent proficient or advanced, third grade ELA, this is the measure by which Monocacy is measured, as a feeder school of Anamity. So, right now, the only two schools that have that are Monocacy and Anamity, because there are no third graders at Burnsboro. Okay? And we'll talk about how that plays to Monocacy as well. And then, of course, the only ones of us who give ACTs or SATs are the high school, so that score applies only to the high school. Makes sense so far? Okay. We're gonna talk about how this is factored, because it calculates importantly, but you will notice that closing the achievement gap shows up twice on everybody's scores immediately following their academic performance. It shows up as closing the achievement gap for all students, and then it shows up as closing the achievement gap for students who are historically in groups that are identified as historically underperforming. So, those are our students who are economically disadvantaged, those are our students who do not speak English as their first language, and they are students who are identified as special education. Okay? So, some of those, all of those students, some of those students fall into both groups. So, an economically disadvantaged student is in both groups, both in the all students group and in the historically underperforming students group. Okay? All right. So, how do I know if I'm closing this achievement gap? And this is going to sound a little bit like No Child Left Behind, because this is what's left of No Child Left Behind in this piece of SPP. So, baseline data was collected, and the difference between 100% proficiency and the baseline was calculated. So, if you were at 60% proficiency, then you had 40% gap to close. You have six years to close that achievement gap, excuse me, by 50%. So, you don't have to close the whole gap, but you have to close the gap by half. So, from the baseline, they calculate for schools the percent that they need to close that gap every year, and that gap is cumulative. So, if it's 3.9 the first year, then it's 7.8 the second year, and so you can see that the extent to which we don't close that achievement gap in one year, it just becomes that much more difficult to close that gap year over year. So, it calculates a targeted performance standard, which principals can click on. You'll notice anything on those printed papers, it's underlined in blue, is a hot link when it's live and in front of you, so principals can pull this up, they can see what that percentage is to close, they can see what their targeted performance scores need to be in order to close that achievement gap. If you do anything less than what you have to do, you get a zero. So, if your goal was 3.9, and you had 3.8, you still got a zero. Does that make sense? I mean, not that it makes sense, but... So, that's where that comes from, and it works for both of those groups. Okay? Okay. So, then we come to the next part, because you're going down that list, which is the indicators of academic growth, which is P... which is the indicators of academic growth, which is PAS. And so we always say, well, why is growth important versus achievement? And growth is important because it looks at a cohort of students and it compares them to themselves year over year. So it's not this year's third graders versus last year's third graders versus next year's third graders. It's that group year over year over year. And it's also the measure by which we, as a school, as a teacher, as a district, can figure out what impact we're having on students. Are they gaining by being in our classrooms? And we obviously hope that the answer to that is yes. So growth is their current achievement compared to all of their prior achievement. So it's not based on a standard. It's based on that group of kids and how they historically performed. And then, as a result of that, how should they be expected to perform based on the influence of what we do every day for 130 days before we take the next round of tests? Okay?
So we kind of always strike this balance, right? Between academics and growth, or achievement and growth. And they're important to take together. Because achievement is always that argument that we have. Like, what if the kid has the bad debt? Right? And achievement is what happens in a single point of time on a specific date at a specific time. It compares that student to a performance standard. And we do know that we have to achieve, right? If we don't achieve, we don't graduate. We don't get to go to college. We don't achieve when we're in college. They take our money and send us packing. And so achievement in everything that we do is important. At the K-12 level, achievement is very highly correlated to a student's demographic. And we know that that's a lot about experiences kids have before they come to school. And that prior knowledge they walk in our doors with. Growth, measured over time and across time, comparing a student to their own self, is really a fair measure. Did you grow? Did you benefit from being in my classroom this year? Did you benefit from being in my school for 12 years? So growth is important. If we don't grow, then we kind of stay right where we are. And growth typically doesn't have as much to do with a student's demographic. Because it really is measuring what happens when they're with us. Okay? So we take them together. And we get a broader picture of what's going on for that student as a comprehensive picture in our environment at school. So we get these other academic indicators. I'll also make sure that, does that trying to kind of make some sense? So we get some other academic indicators. We get a graduation rate. The only school that we graduate from is the high school. So that counts to the high school. However, the high school doesn't get a promotion score. The rest of us do. So we kind of balance out those two pieces. All of us get an attendance rate. And that's an average daily attendance rate. The high school gets credit for the number of advanced placement classes, in our case, that are offered. And then we get some credits for the number of kids who take PSATs. What's important with all of this high school data is to recognize that it gets calculated as the kids finish their junior year. So it all kind of banks until that cohort gets to their junior year. Which is why there's opportunities for retests at the high school that there aren't in other places. Because that data is just sitting there and waiting for kids to really give them their best effort on something. You also get extra credit, right? You talked about extra credit. So that's good. You have to work for your extra credit. You don't get to just bring in your tissue boxes. Everybody gets some credit for the number of advanced kids that they have in their building. Well, the high school gets some credit for those kids who are doing awesome on those NOCT tests over at ACTC. And the high school also gets credit for the number of kids who are scoring three or higher on their AP exams. Okay? So all that taken together, you're still all sitting there with pieces of paper in front of you where it all starts with the number six. So what do we do next? What do we do from here? I've divided the what do we use from here into three categories. Long-term, intermediate, and immediate. And recognizing that immediate may not always be immediately, immediately. But more short-term solutions. And basically, really just looking at, and it may not be all the solutions. You know, as we work through this as an administrative team, we may have a moment where we go, oh, here's an idea. Let's try that. But for now, here's where we sit. So I'll start with the long-term. So the first piece under there is the full-day kindergarten pilot program. Yes?
Before we jump into the solutions, can we, are we gonna, at some point, are we gonna go through and discuss the problems that we're gonna solve with these ideas specifically? Like, this is just a, how are we gonna get our scores up?
I think some of the problems will become evident if they don't.
Okay.
Okay? If they don't, let me know. Okay? So first thing is, how do we get our kids early? And get them used to school, those early literacy, early math, early school sorts of skills? So we have a full-day kindergarten pilot program over at Monocacy. I put this as a long-term solution because those kids aren't third graders yet. They're still five. So they, they don't, we don't necessarily see the result of that in the immediate. We also have this partnership with the Berks County IU with our pre-K camps program. And those kids are super adorable. But it also is our recognition as a district that that early childhood education piece is really super important. And the sooner we can get kids into structured school settings and provide those background experiences that they may not be getting at home for them and with them, that should help us. But just like our full-day kindergartners are five, super adorable pre-K kids are three. So that's probably not something we see right away. But we are providing access for our kids in our buildings, in, in some cases, in really walkable settings. So about half of the kids that are coming to the pre-K camps class at Berksboro actually walk every day. And that just might be lucky. But that is happening. So we are providing a really positive early childhood opportunity for our kids in our schools. We've set the course for the educational stand. This really responsible K-5 model, that'll be finished being placed next year. And that should let us really put some solid interventions in place across the spectrum. And then we do have this curriculum piece that's, that's out there. We do really truly need to look at that. Is our curriculum matching standards? Is our curriculum coming through at the common core kind of expectation level? Where are we curriculum-wise? And that's a big piece, right? Because that's what happens. And so we do need to take a look at that. And we've had lots of conversations about that at curriculum and instruction. So that's long-term solutions. A couple of which are pretty, that curriculum writing piece is a pretty big chunk to light up. But curriculum is an important piece.
In the more immediate, but not immediately immediate, there are some things that we can do that probably have a little bit of cost to them. So one of the ways to get some points at the high school is to have all kids take the SATs. It costs us about $50 a student. We're not currently doing that, but some of our neighbors are. And so just the conversation around, is that something we want to do? Is that something that sets kids up for success? It is a national merit qualifying test. So would give kids those opportunities. The next three kind of go together. One of the things that we recognized is the need for all of us as principals to be providing consistent and effective feedback when we're walking through classrooms. And so we have instituted shared administrative walkthroughs, which happen twice a month. We are, as of tomorrow, finished our first trip through all of the schools. And then we're asking principals to do their own walkthroughs of their own buildings. Again, what's going on in classrooms? And let's provide some feedback for that that's effective. They are coming together as an administrative team once a month. And we're looking for commonalities, concerns, successes. What can we drive professional development with? They are also working through the book leading professional conversations, which is Charlotte Davidson's work. So that kind of goes nicely with the teacher evaluation framework. And how do they consider the allocation of resources? I don't want that to be a negative. But as we look at finishing this process of the Princeton model and getting our schools into that new framework, just really making sure that we've set everybody up to be successful. So not an idea, and not that we're allocating resources poorly. Just have we done it the best way possible?
One of the things that we continue to talk about is teacher attendance. And I know that Jim has some really good data around that. And then one of the pieces that Shelley's working on with her folks is really writing the Fensible's academically sound IP's. So that we have documents that are really delivering what students need, when they need it, in a way that's flexible and allows us, again, to kind of go back to that resource piece and how do we use that effectively? And then the last piece is, what are we doing now? Because we have to do something now. So what are we doing now? And these are kind of in no particular order. So I'm actually gonna take them a little bit out of order. One of the first things that we did was, scores came out, was we, Rob, made an appeal to the Department of Ed asking them to relook at the benchmarks for Amity and Monocacy as a result of changing school structures. And that second look came back and said that the Department of Ed had done their statistics correctly. And so, but you have to ask, right? So we did. The second piece is really the first piece that's up there, which is really making sure that we are retesting at the high school. Did we leave stuff out on the table because we made a decision not to retest? But that mechanism is built in at the high school. And so we should take advantage of it. And then the last piece there is really the chief academic officer's belief, really the key to what we do every day. What we do every day is that we do teaching and we do learning. And so we really need to make sure that the instructional time and the instructional practice is our priority and our focus. And Jeff, to answer your question, that's the answer. That how we're using instructional time and, and what we're doing with kids when we have them may not be as streamlined as like it to be. And that's the purpose of walkthroughs. And all of that kind of plays together. So what we've asked principals to do during their walkthroughs and what we've modeled for them is using scripting, which is every minute writing down what's happening. And then using that data to provide feedback to teachers about what we're seeing in their classroom. After our last round of walkthroughs, we had a conversation about, is that really what we thought we should have been seeing when we walked into an intervention class? So just that, do we need to relook at that? Do we need to reevaluate it? At the three-to-five level, and really the K-5 level, looks a little differently in K-2 than it does in three-to-five. But we have a calendar that we've given to folks that really ensures that we're progress monitoring on a regular basis. And so what you saw in the board report that I gave last week is the first cycle of that from Berksboro. So what happened from September 18th until last Friday, November 10th. So really, we've set up that assessment calendar. Mr. Miller and I met today and talked about how do we move that forward with folks. And then the other piece to that, and that's important because right now, we kind of need that other data, right? We've got this SPP score sitting out here. But we're missing that other piece of data that says, let's look at what's going on in our schools with our research-based assessment. So just working to kind of make that common practice. And then we've set up in three-to-five, a daily schedule, that really focuses on Language Arts and Math. And so in addition to an hour and a half-long whole-group Language Arts block, we've also added to that block an hour of specific targeted reading intervention. So last month, we talked about why on earth do we give these FMPD tests? And what are we doing with them? Well, that's the answer. So what that looks like is, for an hour, students are moving through 20- to 30-minute sessions, depending kind of on what they need, that are really based on what they need based on that FMP assessment. So students who are well below level are meeting three times in that hour. So they're getting three really targeted and specific instructional moments with the teacher. Some of our top readers, all of our top readers actually, are getting that same amount of targeted specific support, obviously differently because the materials and resources that they would use are different than what we might use for a struggling reader. So all kids every day are getting an hour of really specific targeted reading instruction. And then we've also added in a 30-minute daily math intervention to that schedule. And while I would love to tell you that I have, we haven't quite made that what we wanted to be yet. But it's a work in progress and we're there. Yeah.
So what, like, what's, what is a math intervention like? What's an example of that?
So for fifth grade right now, we're using a program called Get More Math. You're a fifth grader, right?
I do.
So our fifth graders are using Get More Math, which is a program unlike Study Island. And actually, we have this kind of unique opportunity. So we jumped at it. The person who is writing Get More Math wrote the program originally for his pre-algebra and algebra kids. And then he saw this fantastic growth because it's cumulative. So kids are always coming back and touching back on skills throughout the year. So nothing that you did in September doesn't show up again until the final at the end of the year, right? So it continues to come back. So that's one of the interventions we're reusing in fifth grade. They may be spending time with the math intervention, the math support person in a small group. That would, or you could pull it through to a smaller to the back of the room, do some pre-teaching, pre-teaching.
But just in general terms, like what's the goal, what is the, like, how is intervention time defined and like what's the purpose of it?
So the purpose is the same as it is for reading. Some specific targeted support in what you need in math.
So each student is getting targeted instruction or activities in that 30 minutes geared towards their needs?
I, it's not happening as cleanly as...
No, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying what's happening.
Ideally, yes. No, ideally, yes. That's, that's where it's at. It will eventually look like what reading looks like. It's not that clean yet. But that's what would happen, yes. So they would go get some targeted specific intervention. So if we pulled five skills, if there's five of us on a team and we recognize from our data that measurement, angles, adding, subtracting, multiplying, by, whatever those five skills are, then we would rotate kids through those five skills. And they come back at the end of that and say, okay, are there five more? Do we need more time on these five? Do some people need more time on these five? And some people are ready to go? It does require kind of that constant changing and flexibility and rotating through a skill team.
So is, if the, if the students are using an app as an example for the math, how are we tracking whether or not they're moving at the right pace or if they're hitting the right things in that app?
So the Get More Math app is totally teacher-driven. So the teachers go in and they say, this week I covered double-digit multiplication and I covered division with remainders. And they put those skills in for kids to practice. That actually has a setup to it. The kids have to get a certain number right before they can move on and count the skill as master. And it keeps coming back. So if it's something that we did in September, it shows up again for them now. Which is really, I think the power of it is, math is kind of one of those things that it has been forever, right? Where chapter one is about this. And then chapter two is about this. And chapter three is about this. And unless your teacher is really, and keeps coming back, then you have to remember to go back. And so what the app is giving us is an opportunity for that to continually evolve through that. Teachers can see in real time what their kids are struggling with, what they're not struggling with. So teachers can sit in the lab with kids. And they can see that Jeff and Dave are really struggling with something.
So if it's true intervention time, then in that 30 minutes, the teacher should be interacting with the kids based on what they're doing within the app?
Mm-hmm. And they have the, they have the ability to do that.
Okay.
So it's pulled out, raised down some basis. The kids actually really like it. And they're really excited about it. So the cell, it wasn't a cell because we're doing this as a pilot, really. So the cell, it wasn't a cell because we're doing this as a pilot really. He was, the developer was really looking for a group who had fifth graders who would be willing to try. And so he said, oh, okay, we'll try. And so he's been really receptive to our concerns with the program and some of the things that we notice with fifth graders are more challenged than they might be with ninth graders. So he had given ninth graders lots of privileges and permissions, and we learned very quickly that some of those privileges and permissions you need to turn off for fifth graders. Like the games, you can't let the games be live all the time because fifth graders figure out how to play the games really fast. And not that the games are bad, we've turned them back on at night for kids if they want to log in, they get home to play the games. Those are allowable. Teachers can give students game credits. So if a student is working really hard and has mastered a skill that maybe they struggled with, the teacher can log in in that moment and change that kids' permissions. So if you've worked really hard and you finally get that day where you sit in math and you get all those kind of questions right the first time, the teacher can go back in and kind of turn those things on and off for kids. So they're pretty funny to listen to and watch when they're engaging with the program. So it seems to be positive and, you know, we'll see how it goes. But what I like is that it's that kind of continual constant review back for kids so that things don't sit out there. So I said this to teachers, leaving you with it also. And then I'm leaving questions, and principals are here too, so that's important. But I think, like I said in the beginning, that this really is the opportunity to look at this and go, okay, so now what? And I shared some of the now whats, and it's that opportunity, that fork in the road, to say, okay, we can keep doing what we're doing, or we can kind of choose to challenge that status quo and change what we're doing. And we know that change is hard, and we know that change takes time, but what I firmly believe is that that last bullet is really, really wrong. That our kids walk in our doors at kindergarten, and they leave us as 12 graders, and this is the 13 years, and those people are paying college for it, and that is right. This is the 13 years of the one chance they get at free education, everything else they're paying for. And so it is really incumbent on us to find out the answer to what's going on and to work hard to make sure that that one chance that our kids get is the best one chance that they can have, whether it's here in Berks County, or whether it's in the Commonwealth, or whether it's anywhere. But we really want our kids to walk away with that best one chance, and our kids deserve that. And so that's where we are. And I think that that future focus must be constantly there. So principals are here, I'm here, Rob's here, we'll do our best. I'm gonna have a little bit of plausible deniability because I'm here, but principals are all here, and so your questions are here.
So the scores do compare between schools, right? So I'm looking at the districts that are in our area, but they all, or not necessarily all of them, but they tend, they'll use different curriculums for math or for reading. So how do I know which of those curriculums is producing better scores? If there's any relationship to the curriculum that they're using versus, and maybe their students really aren't any different than ours except they're scoring better because the curriculum's different, or it's happened to be more aligned with what the tests are going after?
So I'll let folks jump in, we've got a little more history here, but one of the things that we do know is math is pretty consistently in the same program across the county. So that is a question, and what's different, right? In our schools, other schools, if we're all using go math. And so it's a, it's a good, it is a good question, and that's why I think it comes back to what are we doing every day with kids, right? And an awesome teacher is the best...
...student that you have.
Awesome curriculum, mediocre curriculum, awesome teacher is really gonna drive student progress. So that's, that's kind of that piece, and it's important that they're all connected, they're all being together. So Rob, I don't know where you guys are, county guys, because I'm muted in that conversation, but I think, you know, curriculum is certainly important, the essential connection, aligns is important, and we have some work to do there.
In aligning and checking.
And making sure it matches up. So that's definitely work that wants to...
The participation rate for monocracy in everything, all the other schools are in the 90s, but monocracy, I don't know, the state there is minus 900.
Well, they don't actually participate. Rob, you can explain that better, but yeah.
Yeah. Monocracy Elementary Center is a feeder school, and they do not test the K-1, 2. And so therefore, what they're doing is they're taking metrics from the schools they feed into. They take the third grade only, so that's why it's, they feed into AMITI this past year. So it takes the third grade, and they, you're looking at participation rate against the one you're looking at right now. It takes the third grade participation rate in AMITI and incorporates that into that particular metric. But whatever you see with monocracy, right, you're all very different, the state makes the rules on this. They are considered a feeder school and it's taken what happened in third grade only, not the entire building. And all the AMITI progress are previously, if it would take what happened in Berksboro, would have been directly in there in the third grade.
In the, in the gap measures, so as an example, science and biology, it says 25. Does that mean we've closed 25% of our gap, or how am I reading that 25? The zeros, I understood you said...
Rob, you just didn't read.
I didn't read it, it's like a zero, so what's 25?
What color is the triangle, sorry?
It's red.
And so red upside down triangle still? So you didn't read that, like you, you meant 25% of your 20, of your, but you, you still didn't read what you needed to read. So let me pull that up.
Scott, if my changes is gonna... I don't care if this goes away right now.
Like, there's similar numbers with the gaps. The gaps say 50, some say zero, they both have a red triangle and down.
So if you, when this is live, so if you pull it up, you can click on that zero or that 15%, I don't know which school you have.
Uh, high school, I was just in the top sheet.
So...
You can leave AMITI if you want, I'll switch to that.
I mean, it doesn't...
I thought it was either zero. I just wanted to, it's hard to digest this though.
Yeah, it is, and it's hard not to have it sitting in front of you. So if we pull back up the high schools, since that's where you are, sorry. And you pull up that 25% for your historically underperforming kids, and you click on it, so there, there's your baseline. At the high school, it was 40%. So the difference between 40% and 100% is 60%.
Yep.
And then you have, so there's your 60%, and then as you go down over the course, you had to close 30% of that, so do you see where that's going down? I know it's really not...
Yes, it's 50% in six years.
50% in six years, so you have six years to close 30% of that.
So I take, so then if it says 25, that means I'm halfway there?
So here's where you are. Get one down. So you had to come through. You had to close 20% of it this year. Cumulative gap to be closed in the reported year, which is 20%. And we closed 25%. So we're getting, oh no, we closed 5%, which is 20, we closed 5%, which is 25% of the required 25%. Love statistics, right?
Well, 5 is only 20% of 25.
Okay. I can't read. So we got 20, so what's our points at the bottom?
My pointy bottom.
Right. So the proficiency target for the next reported year is that we have to be at 65%. So we've got to gain another 5% percent required. So that's cumulative. You closed it 5% this year, ouch! So you've obviously closed more in the years prior. 5% of 20 is 25%. So the gap required to be closed was 20%. We closed 5% of it, which was 25% of the required...
So if they, if they report percent, that just means you, you're at or above whatever your target was.
Yeah.
All right, so if you're at 50%, that means you're ahead of schedule, you've already hit 50% of the goal when you may only need 25 or whatever.
So they're all, it is a little easier when you can kind of play with it on here. So this is all public data, so you can go in and you can say that you're a board member or you're a community member, and all this website is sort of out there to be...
And the gaps are gonna show red until you hit them, until you close them.
Yep.
So in the high school, the, the growth, the indicators of academic growth, they were all at about 50%. So I'm gonna read that.
Except for science and biology, where they did awesome.
Yeah, actually, yeah, the, well, yeah, the three that are there, science, biology, are 50, science and biology are at 50.
Mm-hmm. For all kids. So what's awesome for all kids in science and biology, we did something to close the gap, but not for those kids who are in that historically underperforming group.
Yeah, I'm down here in years of growth, PBAS test.
Yep, so that's your PBAS. So that's, did they grow more than a year, eight years?
So those 50s are saying...
They did not.
They grew 50% of what their growth should have been.
Not necessary. So it's a change in performance level. So they didn't, so they didn't grow enough?
Yes, they're, they only grew 50%, like whatever the expected growth was, they only get 50% of it.
These scores actually are ranges. So when we go to that scoring tab, I don't even think that is my, well... But, so that growth is that PBAS piece, which is another conversation for, for that statistics. But, so really, any place that you've got a green triangle or a green square or something blue is positive. And other places are places to take a look and see what's happening. Is it curriculum, is it instructional, is it book?
Professor, just looking at the initial numbers, like math is a problem across the board, etc. Are there other things we can address that?
Math is definitely a problem across the board. And actually, I spent last, two weeks ago, and what I did for the whole week was sit in math classrooms just to see what was happening in the practice. So it's a starting place to just kind of see what's going on, what's our kids' experience like in math class. So that's a starting place, and it's a place that principals are springboarding for to have conversations with them. This is the part, it's a start, you know, recognizing that you might just start something. I used more than my 10 minutes, sorry.
Can I just add a couple comments? First, I would say probably one of the better, I, I can tell it's already complicated needing all these things, so I appreciate it. I know this is actually one of the better explanations we've had of the system, so, so thank you. And I agree, you know, we have to, we're very sorry to accept responsibility for where we're at and how it's performed, right? I mean, we can shoot everybody up here, but that, but that accomplishes much. So looking forward to the, to the solutions now. One thing we don't talk about, and I don't know if, how you would, you would go about this, and maybe this is a topic, but, I mean, our, our teachers can do everything right, or tried everything right, administration tried everything right, but, you know, we seem to always, forget we're asking a lot of our, our schools to do these days, and we seem, we seem to drop the area of where does parent responsibility end? And, you know, I could be speaking incorrectly here, but I think it was a lot easier to teach a class years ago when there was a lot more responsibility and student discipline. That was, the students actually would pay attention. It's a lot harder now to command your class. I'm not, I'm not a teacher, I was not a teacher, but, and if I'm wrong on that, you know, please tell me.
So the conversation that Rob and I had this afternoon, like probably three hours ago, was we have to control the time we control, right? And so, and it wasn't three hours ago, it was in your moment, this afternoon. So controlling the time that we control, right? And the time that we control, the elementary level is 8:30 to 3 o'clock. The high school level is 7:30 to 2:00. So really, really being positive of how we spend that time, recognizing that focus might not be...
I think so, so my question is, do other districts, or is there a way that we can try to engage our parents more? To try and bring them on board? You know, I think that's when you, maybe I'm looking at it, like, when you have your kids in a city and you take them to a charter school. I think the parents are engaged and they are part of the solution in that charter school because they want their kids to succeed and be able to move, move out of the, into a better, better life. So, you know, how do we engage parents? How do we, how do we get them to, and I know there's a lot of, we need a district that are engaged, but by the same, I'm sure there are a lot that are not.
And I think it's, and I think we're doing some things. So I think it's being flexible and what we need with parents and where we need with parents. So having conferences at different times helps so that parent who maybe is working at night can come in the afternoon or, or vice versa. Lots of spaces and places, social media is engaging parents. If you're a follower of the unconscious Berksboro, PSA word of the day posts, like, those are really attempts at, here's what, here's what you can ask your kid about at school. And so I know that schools are really trying to use that social media piece as that conversation starter. Because we also know that kids go home and what do they tell you they did at school? Nothing. I don't know. They shrug their shoulders and walk out of their room. So the extent to which we can give parents conversation starters also helps. And I think just recognizing the parent of all that is different. Looks different now than it did, looks different now than it did when I started teaching, and that wasn't all that long ago. I mean, it was, but, but it looks different. And, you know, how do we choose to engage parents? And where do we choose to engage parents? School sometimes wasn't safe for them. So if I made a school and never really got experience, I might not call to conversation service. So how do we...
Right, so what are the other...
So we've got to play that, right? And we've got to, we've got to figure out what that is. And I don't know that anybody has a great answer for that, but...
That's part of the conversation.
Yeah, I think that's it, it's part of the conversation.
Well, from a technology standpoint, some of the apps we're using are available for home, like math, like extra math, that is a way we can engage parents at home. One of the things that we're looking at, and there are some of the other options, and that would be perhaps restart, that used to be done years ago, and it fell by the wayside. So that's, that's something we're thinking to look at to see if we can use those extra supports to connect school and home a lot better, maybe more currently. So, you know, we'll be coming with some options later on, and I guess we'll position use, use like, but right now, some of the interventions we're doing are giving to parents.
Okay. I also wanted to inform the board and the public that next year, our Chinese immersion language program is being discontinued. The program, which is sponsored by the Department of Defense, has seen funding problems over the last year, and also the person who is in charge of it for the Berks County area is retiring. This program, managed by the person who's retiring, she's gone above and beyond what would could be asked for anyone. She was more like the dead mother for the teachers. What happens with the program is these teachers are flown over from China... What happens with the program is, these teachers are flown over from China, and they're housed in Redding, in apartments. They don't drive, and the person in charge was the den mother. She was taking them shopping, take them, just be at their beck and call for everything. And all the districts that are using the program, we don't have anyone available to do that side of the job. That's one of the problems, is someone goes above and beyond. Her job description is so huge, none of us can do it. We've been on conference calls with Twin Valley, Governor Mifflin, all of us together, superintendents, then the principals got together, and we are not able to support this program in the way for it to be successful. So we're looking at alternatives to do some blended learning, some online learning courses. But as of right now, the Chinese immersion language program will be going away for next year. It's a shame, because they reached out to us, they came here personally, because we have one of the largest programs in the county. And they were shocked how fast our students took to it, from eighth grade and down at the high school. So we were all trying to brainstorm a way to do it, but we're not able to maintain that sort of bringing the students, the teachers over, getting them housing, and just being with them all the time. So, on that one, the program is going away. Second thing, I wanted to send my condolences to the Kirchner family. If you're, if you're not aware, Thomas Kirchner, former school board director and Amity Township Board Supervisor, passed away unexpectedly last week. Services will be held tomorrow in Birdsboro, and he was also former president of the Optimist Club. So in lieu of flowers, the family has asked for contributions to be sent to the Optimist Club. The address is available if you need it. And once again, I met him a few times, he's a nice man, and he will be missed. That's all I have.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Move to finance? Anyone have any discussion topics with any of the items listed there? Hearing none. Is there any public comment? Move on to presentations by board members. Mr. Potts, has Mr. Ogus and Neal left you any secretaries correspondence?
No, he has not.
Alright, thank you. The BCIU report, Mr. Rathke?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. So not, not too much to last meeting, quite a few races of grants that we awarded to probably 50 different organizations. We also did approve an agreement with Berks County General System to do a GED preparation program for them, which I completely love your past, so we did approve and get a agreement with them on that. And I probably gave you more of this kind of meeting, but we were informed that we did lose a, because Black people know that the IU does bid on a lot of different programs that we do work for. But we did, the early, early resource center, we actually lost a bid. There's a different company that would be taking over that, which we, the BCIU currently does that for Berks County. So we lost that bid for next year, so I think there's over a dozen staff members that could potentially have to be laid off. We're going to have a conversation, so maybe perhaps this company will pick up some of the abilities, but probably don't know about that coming up there at this next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rathke. Berks Career and Technology Board Report, Ms. Tardaski?
I did attend the, the meeting, JFC meeting, at the end of October, and we toured the program now, we toured, we usually tour program every month, and we had toured one of the computer programs, and just need to see, the computer lab wasn't like computer lab, honestly, because we had the computers were all set up, but it was actually almost kind of like, they had tables and desks set up for the kids to go to with their computers, but they also had like high top tables and comfortable chairs, like in a coffee shop, and it's just a different way that the kids use technology today compared to, they, they use some neat things there. We also represented the audit and accepted the audit, and we entered into an interagency agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Labor Industry, and the Office of Educational Rehabilitation for October 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2017, for high school work services for eligible students, and did look at the next year's capital plan. And that was really kind of about, they were the main things that we did. I would like to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to sit on the JFC for the last four years, off and on, I guess maybe five years. So it was, it was really a neat, neat opportunity to get to see 16 board members that worked We didn't, we didn't necessarily, we didn't have all the same problems that we have here. I mean, here we're trying to figure out how to balance taxes and finances and things like that. And because we didn't necessarily have, have the revenue concerns, I mean, we did in fact, and then that we're trying to keep the budget down, but we were really just concentrating on programs and programs to happily make programs better for, or the opportunities better for the kids, that they can, they can jump out into the working world, or into the, the post-secondary education world, and really have some useful skills. So it was neat to see a lot of the projects that the kids did, to see cars that were rebuilt, or the heavy equipment that they take apart and they learn how to fix, or even the dental, you know, and health occupation programs. So I'd just like to say that I appreciated that time, that made some, some good friends and good connections, and I encourage the board again next year with having four or five members to maybe do the tour and the dinner and hold a meeting there, and just see what's, what's available, because I didn't realize all the opportunities that were available to, to our kids before I did that. And unfortunately, it was a little late. You know, my daughter didn't necessarily take advantage of those issues already halfway through her high school career, but it's, it was really a great opportunity there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tardaski. Any questions? Mr. Martino, the legislative report?
Yes, two items. Pennsylvania does now have a budget. The revenue portion of the budget was developed by the legislature and allowed to become law without the governor's signature. It relies heavily on borrowing and expanded gambling, which there may not produce the $2 million true fall necessary. So we'll find out, I guess by June. The other item is, actually, it's more, well, it's a little more, it's called statewide last week, polls, people went to the polls, many of them thinking they were voting to eliminate school property taxes, and they weren't. There was a constitutional amendment, which allows the homestead exemption to go from 50 percent to 100 percent, meaning school boards could forgive 100 percent of the primary residents of the taxpayer. They'd never use the 50 percent, I don't know why they would use 100 percent. In order for this to actually have any effect on school taxpayers, the legislature has to come up with alternative taxes to offset the loss of revenue from school property taxes. And that already has been in the legislature for several years, under House Bill Senate Bill 76, which reports to raise the state income tax and the sales tax to offset the school property tax. Whether that will happen next year or not remains to be seen, but right now, there's no effect of the constitutional amendment being voted to pass last week.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Is there any public comment on the board report? Seeing none. Nine in its entirety is a lot of personnel issues. Is there any discussion along, any items on nine? Hearing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Move to 10, programs? See, we have one trip to, to approve in May.
One, one question, I know, doesn't start CNIOS too much, but have, have we had any of the students that have come into the district, been from the, from the, or is it, I know most of them already has, I've definitely had blocks, and goes, and comes out there?
Not, not that I, not that I've seen, no. Uh, two? Mr. Miller's saying two.
Any public comment? Moving to curriculum instruction, as I understand it, was, today's meeting was canceled, so Mrs. Bice is also not able to attend, so there's no report there. The, I don't think we have, we think we want to schedule a, another committee meeting right before the new board takes effect, so we'll have to double check the date of the next CNI meeting. So is there any board comment? Public comment? Extracurricular Committee, Mr. Rathke, do you have anything to report?
No.
Okay. Any public comment? Facilities Committee, Ms. Tardaski?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Facilities Committee, they meet earlier this evening. We talked about, well, Casey gave some, an update or an overview on things that he's looking at, they'll come up over the next year, but there was really only a couple things that we made recommendations on at this time. The first one was a bleacher curtain for the high school, and it would basically go on the end of bleachers, and it would keep kids from going out of the bleachers. It would eliminate the need for a G-SAT to man at the end of the bleacher area, so that would be a potential cost savings. But the cost for the high school bleacher curtain, we are looking to ask, or recommending that you consider, if you not exceed $6,500. And the reason we did ask for not to exceed number, originally there was going to be two curtains, and so the cost was for two curtains with logos, and we're not sure, we can take the price of the one curtain off, but we're not sure what the, it'll drop for the logo, because it'll only be one instead of two. So it would be a not to exceed $6,500, and not exceed, like they law this company. Then the second item that we are recommending is for eight totes of stadium turf in fill, approximately 17,000 pounds, and the cost for that would be $5,422.10, and that would be from the old turf. If there's any questions, either myself or Casey can answer.
Do we, do we need a logo?
I asked the same question, Mr. Rathke. We don't, we don't need a logo, obviously aesthetically it would look better for the gym. The logo was, I think, about 600 bucks, so certainly, we don't need the logo, but I did ask the same question. So you could always, if, you know, if you'd like to save that, you could just have the curtain without the logo.
I don't have a firm price for next week's meeting.
Well, on that subject, that will be the night of the reorganization. So we won't have a, we won't have a meeting in December, unless it's constituted after that.
Oh, you mean for the, you mean for next week's, the 20th, okay. You're talking about December's...
Yeah, the...
Oh, facility, like we won't have a...
Your next facilities...
Oh, I don't, yeah.
It says the, um, next meeting is November 13th, so I assume that they, it's a misprint for next month.
Yes. I don't know when the next meeting is.
Yeah, typically, we don't have those committee meetings in December. Is there any other board comment for, or questions for, public comment? Seeing none. Move to finance? Mr. Rathke?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We did have a finance meeting, we just back. Talked about a few things, the monetary budget, number one, this department is still working on those numbers. They did give us an update for our total assessment, coming in for our, all our property here, so that has gone up, which is a, a good thing to see, of course, I know which is based on total assessed property value. And we did talk about, we had an update on, last year, we did go out to Port Malford Associates to do some collections for us of undue, unpaid tax bills, and to date, actually as of June 30th, they recovered a bit over $400,000, $400,000 for us, so that seems to be going smoothly, so certainly that's, that's still efficient for, for what we have not received.
Did they have a targeted amount? Obviously, 100 percent.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall targeted now, but that was about 52 percent, I guess was outstanding, so...
That's good progress, then. Is your next meeting next week?
As of, as of right now, it would, Ms. Haynes, Mr. Small, see, we actually had a piece of an agenda to get together, otherwise I'll cancel it, but I'll, I'll chat with Ms. Haynes before we go away.
Any questions for Mr. Rathke? Any public comment on finance? Policy Review Committee, Mr. Scott?
I mean, there's not a whole lot to say, other than the fact that we've had pretty good progress on moving new policies, a couple of new rules on here. The searches policy was a new policy, it was basically pretty much 100 percent directed by PSBA. Mr. Hurley, we had, did basically provide ground rules for, locker property searches, searches of students, et cetera. We didn't have a policy on that?
We did have a policy on it. It was, it was in our district guidelines, it's just...
Right, right. So was it a guideline, it wasn't technically a policy? So, the other is the controlled substance paraphernalia policy, that's similarly updated with all this new state regulations, et cetera. Our next meeting is 20th. That's about it. Any questions on the policies?
Yeah, I do have a question on the controlled substance policy. Took a look at it, it seems like we described everything, description, non-description, everything is described as a controlled substance, and not allowed to be a possession of any students. How do we handle allergies, things like EpiDens and Haller's rousps?
They go to the nurse.
They give it to the nurse?
It's held at the nurse's office, yes.
Okay. And nursing dispenses Advil and aspirin and things as well?
Her parents consent.
Okay. I think there's some confusion, especially in my household with the Advil, it's just curious as far as.
Yeah, all students would go to the nurse. EpiPins, my son is one of them, it's at the nurse's office.
Any public comment on policy? Transportation Committee, Mr. Okosneal couldn't make it tonight, so I'm not sure if, if you know if he was working on anything, Mr. Harris. Otherwise, the next transportation meeting will be held next Tuesday here at the district office. Is any public comment on transportation? Under old business, we have some motions for board calendar, motion to approve in minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, public comment on old business? Seeing none, we'll move to new business. We have the motion to change the name of the Menocacy Elementary Center and the Amity The motion to approve the job description of the new position of instructional technology coordinator. And we'll let, ask if there's any questions about the first two items, and we'll, I'll let Mr. Rathke take the lead on item three.
I have a question for Mr. Harris, I was on the Personnel Committee, remember ever discussing approving a new position of instructional technology coordinator?
This is just the job description that we.
I forgot.
This is something that I've had for about two years, Scott Matts gave it to me when I first arrived, and this is not the hiring of the position, we want to get the job description out there. I know Shelley also asked for a position, that job description was already on our books. This position is something that's going to be needed in the upcoming years of, for the instructional, teaching the teachers how to use the technology that we've given them to teach our students. So Personnel Committee is no longer in effect, CNI wasn't available to look at it, so we put it forward tonight, attached for review, it can be voted yes or no at the next meeting, but this is something that we're looking forward for next year, and we're just trying to clear out everything that we have.
So this is just going for the job description, not going for the position?
But we don't have anyone set for this position or anything, we don't have a salary, but this is something that's needed in the district.
That's what I'm asking, is not to actually advertise the position?
No.
Now, is this position listed, will be listed in the budget for, that we're going to be looking at?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, I mean, I'm fine with having a job description, I think that's a good foundation for what, you know, this is the back of my, I think I have been kind of, and I think we had first talked about something like this was, you know, while we have some time, and we have a job description for what we want done, can we look at the potential for bringing a consultant to handle this work? Because, you know, it's getting all the teachers up and running, once that's accomplished, so what's that job then, what's that job then do? So I mean, it's something we can call a consultant, we can bring in on a temporary basis and bring back as needed, maybe we don't need to hire a full-time person for that job, maybe something we can outsource as a consultant basis.
Well, there is a great need in this district to help support the teachers with the technology that we've paid for and put in front of them to instruct students. I have a council of staff that comes to meet with me, we just met, and the teachers brought this up without knowing this was on our agenda, something we were looking at. They all asked for help because they need support. Now, you're right, we did look at possibly a company coming in last year, and it's just, isn't just getting it up and running and leaving, this is the ongoing development and training of staff. We're bringing in iPads next year, so we're taking a whole year in letting teachers get comfortable and prepared to use this equipment, but we have SmartWords, we have tons of other programs that we pay for, we may not be getting the greatest return on investment because we haven't invested enough money into training the staff in using this equipment.
Well, it could be an ongoing consulting arrangement, I mean, you could bring somebody in, that person might be great iPad, mightn't have a clue on most technologies that we have, so now you have somebody who you got to set out to be trained, and have to train.
But that's one of the problems, is IT, it's very expensive.
If you get a consulting group that has a good depth of folks on there that have different experience, then we can bring that person and have, you know, tap into there are other people that can have in and help us out in other areas. So that's my thought on that. And I also have a question on number one, what does name changes, what does this planning go into effect?
They would go into effect next school year.
And that does not include a, you know, I know Mr. Miller's pushing for digital sign at the vanity.
There.
That's not included in.
Just name change.
Is there a price tag for creating these changes? Change letterhead, like.
Well, yeah, we'll have to change signage and letterhead and everything else.
So I.
But this is.
If we can get an estimate like that.
Okay. This just goes to realigning the schools, this was the last step in real life.
Let me come back to number two for a second, Mr. Harris. Mr. Rathke brought up what we had discussed before, was hiring a consultant, which also for those happy teachers, costs added to the budget. But more than that, one of the fears that was discussed in the Personnel Committee was having these jobs on the books and unfilled, and then later saying, oh, well, that job's already been here, so we need to fill it. I prefer that we don't approve a job unless we actually approve hiring a position.
I concur, I don't, like, I don't understand why we would put an empty position on a budget unless we plan on filling it. In my mind, like, the only thing we're going to plan to do is wait till next year and then fill it.
Well, the intent is to fill the position, that's why it would be a budgeted position.
So I guess just to be crystal clear, that we're just approving the language in a job position, we're not approving a position to be budgeted?
We will have budgeted funds set aside to support the position if we find the right person, and it's a cost effective, instead of finding a consultant, or if we find a consultant, we would abolish the position. What we are trying to do is, while we're putting the budget together, making sure that we have funds available for this position that's needed, far enough out that we're not throwing it in front of you last minute and rushing, trying to get it done in the spring.
Is this mostly in response to the new iPad grade form at the high school?
It's that, it's also the other technology that's out there that may or may not be used the most effective way. And like I said, when I met with staff, they did mention, we would love to have someone in our classrooms who has a teaching background, who could help us train to use his equipment properly. It just goes with supporting the teachers in their classrooms.
You're saying this will be in the budget, how much money are you planning on putting in?
Stop my question.
Well, we're looking at the salary, it would be about $70,000.
Salary and benefits, or you're talking $70,000?
I was talking just $70,000 salary.
So the question I asked is, how much money are you planning on putting in the budget?
$70,000, so that would be salary and benefits, so we're looking probably about $50,000, and then another $20,000 for benefits, in line with our transportation order.
Okay, number three, Mr. Rathke, do you want to lead that discussion since you brought this up?
So I think most people know that I have a property that's off the corner of the street at 422, but I think most of the, that there's probably an accident there every few weeks. So the last accident that occurred, actually I was having a conversation with Chief Kenzie, I stopped over, we were chatting, and he goes, yeah, you know, my wife just picked up, my granddaughter at Menocacy, and just wandered intersection a few minutes ago. So I got to thinking, you know, I asked that query to the candidate, I said, how many times do we have a bus that goes through that intersection a day? And I was told approximately 200 plus times a day, a bus goes through that intersection. So I just, I'm just wondering what the, at some point the odds of one of our buses maybe getting hit in that intersection, you know, the statistics, the room, if the district was in the O S C, you could give us that answer. But, so I just wanted to bring up the conversation, I mean, the township has had conversations about this, potential solutions. I did know if school having a conversation with the township would help, you know, whether that would provide any weight to get out of the, and do anything, but I know the township does have some options, I think I'm considering doing some other options there, so. Just got a reason I wanted to bring up.
When we were working on the agenda, one of the questions I had asked Mr. Harris was, you know, what are some of the rules for our buses, you know, because I went back, I tried to see what, you know, just do a basic Google search to find out the accidents, how they were reported, and it seemed like people were either turning across without a green, or turning onto the highway or flowing with traffic, and one of those combinations seemed to be, you know, the 10 stories I was able to find, like seven of the 10. So the first question I had was, all right, what are the rules for the buses? Are they allowed to turn at that intersection when, you know, if they were heading westbound, are they allowed to turn on that green without an arrow? And I'll let you.
Is there an arrow on that?
Yeah, so there's an arrow, but that allows, you know, I can't tell the exact time, but then once the arrow goes away, you do a green.
They can turn.
You can continue to turn if the opposite. The problem, the bus probably, Mr. Martino would speak, or I can, but the bus probably has better visual, but if you're in a vehicle, and there's a car in the opposite turn lane, your line of sight, there's that dip that comes down, and you lose cars that are in that dip, and they're going 60 miles an hour, you think you might have an opportunity to go, and you really don't. Bus being hired, I assume has better line of vision than the cars do, but that is a prominent number of accidents is that making that turn. And we also do, obviously, a lot of our, quite a few of our high school students do it that way to get to the high school as well. I instructed my kids not to turn, not to turn there, if there's a, if we're going there, if there was a treading car opposite of them, I said, just wait until we can see, you won't wait for the next green arrow.
And I have noticed that Amity is sitting officers at that location now, so maybe that's, they're trying to gauge something.
The township has discussed turn an hour only, the problem is then the queue is not very long there, so you potentially have cars down backing up to the highway at some point in time, you know, and the cost of expanding that turn lane obviously is pretty big, and I'm not quite sure if that can handle cars you can get in any.
You just put a warning light at the top of the hill, six lights will be red.
I know Mr. Kenzie Ryder has mentioned that coming from the opposite direction. I'm not sure if that would help or not, because a lot of times, I mean, I see cars go through that lane, and it's obviously, you condition a stop, but they, they are just going through. So that could, I think that's one of the items that they talked, so I know the township is definitely talking about signage, putting in some more speed limit signs, which are kind of few in part, I mean, so that is one of the.
Or the camera?
I'm not sure that that's, maybe, Mr. Tardowski can answer that, I'm not sure if it's legal, or that.
Well, the.
Traffic cameras?
I know, I have to improve it, but I think the issue there is more.
Visual.
It is really hard to see, and people misjudge the speeds coming, and you don't know there's a car coming in that valley, and I've always taken the approach you have, if you can't see, don't go, because it's not worth it, it's not worth waiting until the next green arrow, but I've always kind of found that you can put all the signage up you want, people just, they don't read it, they don't listen.
Yeah, I think from the board standpoint, the district standpoint, if there's something that Amity would like us to do, you know, we should certainly have a conversation with them, I think we'd be supportive, you know, obviously it's a safety, it's a safety issue, so why wouldn't we be supportive of it, so.
If I'm not mistaken, coming off of Menocacy Creek, you can turn on red, can't you?
Yeah.
And I think that contributes.
My two suggestions were that no turn left on an hour, put a green arrow on the lane, and alleviate the turn on red, the turn, break turn on red.
And as far as the arrow, they could just have that longer, they're worried about the traffic backing up.
I'd say, it's not even always just the cars waiting to turn, it's, I mean, it is, but it's not, but I mean, you'll see, sometimes there's only two or three cars.
You can't get to the turn lane.
They get to it because, you know, people, and they leave 20 feet in between every car when they're sitting at the.
Yeah, they need to expand the queue there.
Right, yeah, that's, that's the other.
From the things I saw, it seemed like a lot of them were, the visual, they didn't, they didn't see it, they didn't see the car coming, or if they were turning right on, you know, on to 422, or turning across 422, it seemed like that dip, like Mr. Rathke is, that seemed to be the play into most of the stories I saw.
And your traffic there is going to get even worse. Do you have that more channels, or? And if the building didn't used to be Charlie's and Deep's and Musso's areas resold and reopened, that contributed even more traffic.
Yes, so if you're having continued discussion with Mr. or Chief Kenzie, yeah, we certainly, I think, I'm just speaking for myself, I'd be supportive.
Yeah. Dave, do you notice Amity has any of those, the flashing speed devices?
We do, actually that was one of the chief's requests, they do a sign that tells you out there, you're going down, yeah.
Maybe it's throw it out there, but I mean, I think people speak, go, coming, you know, from down that direction too, but.
Yeah, I think, she's been putting cars in the medium and trying to.
Is there any public comment on new business? Is there any, oop. Is there any presentations by the public on any issues?
Before we go to the public, if I may, while Mr. Miller's here, I want to thank Mr. Miller for his grandparents' Day open house and his veterans' Day open house, I think they were both tremendously attended, and I want to thank Mr. Miller for the opportunity to participate in both, thank you.
Is that your granddaughter in the picture with your jacket?
Yes, in fact, I type that beauty and the old guy, so, yes, that is my granddaughter.
Do you fit into that jacket?
Hard.
Do you fit into that jacket?
50 years ago.
Laurel, we're now 367, but I'd like, I just had two things. One, I'm sure there's been a lot of discussion about the district test scores that came out at the higher level, I'm just curious if we went to the source, to the teachers, why do they think the scores dropped? And I'm not just saying a small committee, maybe we surveyed all of the teachers and say, what do you think happened, what can we do to improve it, what tools did you need that you didn't have, things like that, and get their input, they're the ones that deal with it day to day, they're the ones that give the task. My other question is, I don't come enough, but I do try and follow on the agenda, and I know a few months ago, it was approved to do a secretarial survey to see how the staffing needs were, I've been trying to follow on the agenda to see when those results were going to come out, have you gotten them?
Yes, we have.
Have you discussed them?
Yes, we have.
In public?
Discussing in public?
No.
No.
Will you share with the public what the results were?
We didn't discuss it. It was presented to us, but we didn't really discuss it.
Right. It was presented in executive session by the gentleman who did it. Would be one of our personnel issues. Yeah, it was a.
Because you had to approve spending, I want to say, five, $6,000 to do the survey. And we get to find out that the survey's sent. We spent money finding out schools.
Yeah, I don't see why not. We could put together a recap of it. That could be for the public.
Okay.
And we'll post it online.
Okay. Thank you.
Laurel, I can be a step ahead of your question. Amy Hicks, Orchard Drive, Douglasville. I was looking at the different SPP scores and I think it's interesting to know our elementary schools AEC, I'm sorry, B, C, and M here are 60.7, AEC is 62.9. The middle school and the high school were slightly higher at 68.5 and 66.1. And I know that many of you have been here year after year as I stand at this podium during budget time. And I tell you, don't cut teachers. You're gonna raise class sizes. Don't cut the elementary encore program. Don't cut kindergarten. Don't cut basic skills. I just made a long list here. Don't cut all the instructional aids. What you're seeing are the ramifications of those decisions. I anticipate that those low scores will continue if you don't see restoration of those cuts that we made in the past. That's, I think, the result of those decisions. Certainly, there are other factors, but I think that's the primary driver. Mr. Rathkeb, too, I wanted to mention your comment regarding instructional technology coordinator. I agree with Mr. Harris that that person should have, if you were to approve it, have a teaching background. The teachers don't need to have learned how to turn on smart boards or how to calibrate them. What they need is somebody within the field of education to show them how to use that smart board to make math lessons come alive for kindergartners or a physics lesson come alive for an AP physics. You need an educator to do that, not some tech guy who doesn't really understand how a classroom works. So I think that if you were to approve that, it would be more worthy to have somebody with an educational background. My just sense, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to take part in that question, then I have a follow-up question for administration to take about. If that's, if that's the case that we do require sort of educational background and has a technology background as well, are we gonna find somebody for $45,000 to $50,000 to let that slide out?
No.
Okay. One, one thing, as you, as you know, we have some new board members coming on next month. I've been in contact with everyone but Mrs. Albright. I've sent you a couple of emails, haven't got a response from you. But we would like to set up orientation for the new members. Gave you a choice of two dates if you could get back to me.
I was working on my schedule, trying to.
That's okay. I just wanted, I haven't received.
I have to take a day off to do it.
I haven't seen a response from you, so I wasn't sure if my emails are getting to you. Okay. But I also also wanted to take the time to thank the outgoing board members, as I won't be here next week, for their service. It was an honor serving with you. I don't think the public in general really has an idea how much time and effort this job really takes if you're gonna do it right. And it's, since we're not compensated, that makes everyone that does this very special because it's something you want to do, you feel passionately about doing. So again, I enjoy very, enjoyed very much some of our robust executive session discussions at times. I think we've always been very cordial, which, you know, my experience, Mrs. Trodowski and Mr. Potts have done also, has not always been the case in executive sessions, but during our tenure, we've always had a very good working relationship and I do very much appreciate it. Okay. Uh, adjourned?
Okay.
Adjourned. Come to you to hold, there's no.
I have things that you can sign. But.
Let me see. Secretary, if our schedule doesn't permit doing a 3:00.
Well, our orientation can be done anytime. It's the PSBA that they're bringing people in to do the official, how to be a board member training. So for us, we are, we're here all day.
Mrs. Albright? Can you come here?
So should I wait for Dane to come in? Because Kathy says she has, he's already filled out for Dane. She knows he's gonna be here till the last minute. So should I hold these?
There's, there's two parts to the orientation. There's the board member orientation that the district does. We can do that anytime. I just threw that, I just threw that out there. We can do that at night, you know.
Yeah, I was trying to, I was, I was.
But there will be.
I was emailing, I was only getting, I got the one, one person answered. That's the only one I've got.
Yeah, but my, Julia and Eric Dursen are going to do the fill-in tape summary. For Mr. Miller, we are, yeah. But then there's two, there's two sets. It's about an hour with Mr. Harris and I, small.
We could go over the orientation.
And then. And now the state is initiating new board member training.
It's a PSBA?
Yeah. That, that Mr. Harris is talking about. That will have to be during today.
Right. Well, so are they?
That must have been the, the.
Well, there's a couple. One, one is us. Well, one is me, Lauren, and Rob, and Michelle. Then the other PSBA one is in the same location, no, no, I'm sorry. It's in, um, King of Prussia. It's one of the schools in King of Prussia. They're having a King of Prussia this time. It's like Upper Marion or Lower, whatever, one of the middle schools there. Or they offer to come here and do a special training just for the members here. I think the one's on a weekend and the other, they can do another time here. It's everyone's schedule, so I don't, I was gonna.
Well, like I said, I was waiting to see what the man's consensus was.
The fifth is the.
The fifth, and I'll, that's the day, so, and it's at the re, that, is it?
If you can make it then.
Well, then I'll just take a half day.
Okay. Because, you know, we can always have, just.
Well, no, but I don't, I'd rather do it with, so, all right, so December 5th.
December 5th, 3:00 here.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What's this for you? Primary, September.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't have a.
This is actually missing.
They just.
So Kathy, for the, for the agenda.
So December 5th?
December 5th. So everyone else pick the 5th, so.
On a particular time.
Yeah, we.
Great.
Some of the hair with this one. Yeah, that's right.
My Michael. No, I don't, we don't usually have committees like that.
But it's two, two.
Just because it's usually.
Yeah.
Well, I. But yeah, yours is even better.
No, no.